Citizen failed to observe this public charge, the chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is observed. Commissioner Valentine, will you read our land acknowledgement tonight?
All right, I'm not, I'm the only one without any cred, so I'll read it. Yeah. As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners' meeting, it is crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Kataba, Ino, Okonichi, Shakori, and Tuscorra peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering, understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhibit its land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lee. I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda adjustments for tonight? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Burton, sent by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda is adopted. For announcements, before I pass it to Clerk Wallace, did anyone watch the game last night?
Yeah.
Clerk Wallace.
Good evening, everyone. I will read the announcements published in tonight's agenda. The 2025 DCO Cares recipient organization applications are now open to all nonprofits serving the Triangle community. Durham County Cares is the annual Durham County Government Employee Giving Campaign in which our employees donate funds to those nonprofit agencies chosen as our annual recipient organizations. Applications will be open through February 21st. For additional information in how to apply to become a recipient, please visit decocares.org. Durham County Transportation is seeking public input on its draft fiscal year 2026 Transit Work Plan. The public comment period goes from January 31st to February 21st. Residents may take a survey. There is a link, and you can also email comments@transitplan@dconc.gov. DCO Transportation will also hold two more in-person table and sessions at Durham Station, located at 515 West Pettigame Street on February 12th from 10:30 a.m. till 12:30 p.m. and Tuesday, February 18th from 12:30 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. The Durham County Library System is celebrating Black History Month with a plethora of events for all ages. All throughout February, check out events, both big and small, created to help us all learn about the rich contributions, achievements, and resilience of the Black community throughout history. You can visit Durham County Library to, and visit, I'm sorry, and search Black History Month for additional information. The Durham County Farmland Protection Advisory Board, the Foothills Regional Commission, and Durham Soil and Water Conservation District invite residents to attend a public engagement event on the Durham County Farmland Protection Plan. The purpose of the event is to view the current conditions of Durham County farming and discuss problem-solving strategies. It will be held at 6:00 p.m. on Thursday, February 20th, at the Bahama Ruitin Club, located at 8202 Stackville Road. There is a link to register and two email addresses available on the web, on our agenda if you have questions. Check out the Durham Area Food and Resource Map. It's a one-stop resource to find food pantries, places to get a hot meal, farmer's markets that take SNAP and WIC benefits, and grocery stores that also take SNAP and WIC benefits. There is a link for a map where you can view those locations, and you can also visit In Hunger Durham for a printable list of food pantries that are available. The Durham County Tax Administration wants all taxpayers to know that North Carolina law requires the tax collector to annually publish current-year unpaid real estate taxes. Durham County Real Estate, I'm sorry, Durham County Real Property Taxes not paid by 5:00 p.m. on March 11th will be advertised in the local newspaper on March 26th. For additional information, you can visit dconc.gov backslash tax, or you can call 919-560-0300. Durham County taxpayers will be mailed their 2025 reappraisal notices by the first week of March 2025. These notices will inform taxpayers of their 2025 assessed values after the 2025 general reappraisal process. Property owners are encouraged to visit the Tax Administration website, dconc.gov backslash tax, to review the values, compare them with sales they have observed, and verify that their property tax listing is accurate. The Durham County Board of Elections will hold a free NC voter photo identification card event on Saturday, November, I'm sorry, Saturday, February 22nd, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. at North Regional Library, located at 221 Milton Road. The Board of Elections is holding an event every month at libraries to help distribute free IDs. You can visit decovotes.dconc.gov backslash voters for additional information. DCO Library will host a story in Arabic. Come out to the Durham County Main Library, Main Children's Programming Room to enjoy a story and other activities in Arabic language. Registration is required. They will be held at 10:30 a.m. on Saturdays, February 15th, March 29th, April 26th, and May 17th. Register for the first day, and there is a link there for registration. And lastly, looking to learn about the Sheriff's Office, give helpful feedback, build relationships, and raise awareness, apply today for the Community Academy hosted by the Durham County Office of the Sheriff. For additional information and to apply, you can visit durhamsheriff.com or you can call 919-560-0897. That concludes the events published in tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Clerk Wallace. Are there any other announcements from board members? Commissioner Jacobs? Okay. Anyone else? Any announcements? Okay, none. Then we will now move over to our consented, no ceremonial items, skipping ahead, beginning with our Durham Memorial Stadium, introducing the new executive director, manager of the stadium, Evan Kramer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, County Board members, county staff, and onsite and our virtual attendees. My name is Crystal Thomas. I'm the Deputy Director with Durham County General Services, and I would like to introduce the new County Memorial Stadium Manager, Evan Kramer. Evan graduated with honors from the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill with degrees in sports administration and management. He went on to pursue his graduate degree and earned a master's degree in Parks and Recreation, Tourism, and Sports Management from NC State University. Prior to coming to Durham, Evan was the coordinator of sports program at UNC, overseeing intermural and club sports activities. In November of 2022, Evan came to Durham County General Services as the event coordinator at the county stadium, where he worked in conjunction with the previous stadium manager to host over 100 events each year. He served as the lead on many of, he served as the lead on many successful events at the stadium, including the CIAA Track and Field Championship, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, lacrosse state championship, high school, excuse me, North Carolina High School Athletic Association Lacrosse Championship, and the National Association of Intercollegiate Athletics, also known as the NAIA. Prior to his appointment as the stadium manager, he served as the acting stadium manager for the past three months. Evan is a resident of Durham and is excited to continue the work of growing and developing the stadium and ensuring that it continues to be a positive asset for Durham County and surrounding areas that support local events. I would like to present to you right now, Mr. Evan Kramer.
Thank you, Crystal. I'd just like to say it's an honor to be selected for this position, and reiterate, I'm really excited to continue the work of growing and developing the stadium. I think it's a great resource for the local community and a great asset for the county, so I'm excited to continue that work, working with all of you and people across the county to continue that work. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Crystal, for introducing Kramer, and congratulations, Evan, for this new position. Thank you for your service to Durham this far, and I know you're going to be amazing in this role, and I'm excited to serve with you as the new rep for the Stadium Authority Board. I am looking forward to all of the ways that we've already envisioned how to make the stadium more accessible to our community, and I look forward to the new innovative ideas you're going to bring as well. Commissioner Jacobs?
I also wanted to say welcome officially as the stadium manager, Evan. It's great to meet you, and I appreciate you stepping into the role. It sounds like you have an incredible background to be leading the stadium. I previously was on the authority, and I know what potential there is for Durham County Stadium in collaboration with the Durham Sports Commission and some of the great events that we have seen over the past few years. So I really look forward to your leadership and you really taking us to the next level in our community. Thank you so much.
I'll now bring us to our next proclamation for Black History Month. Commissioner Burton?
Yes, I'm going to read it. I feel like my throat is okay now. Yes. So Durham Board of County Commissioners' proclamation, Black History Month 2025. Whereas Black History Month, a celebration of African Americans and their contributions to history, culture, and society, originally started as Negro History Week in 1926, and was federally recognized as Black History Month in 1976. And whereas during Black History Month, the rich histories and achievements of African Americans in the United States and in Durham are celebrated. And whereas the true history of the United States and in Durham showcased generations of African American leaders who have built and transformed our county, our country, our county, and our city, despite facing racism and barriers to their efforts towards equality. And whereas African Americans have been leaders in securing their right to vote and participate equally as a full society members through the abolitionist, emancipation, and civil rights movements, they have also been instrumental in the industrial labor movement and many other national and international movements. And whereas despite the undeniable impact African Americans have made in history, significant work remains to ensure full equality and access for Black people everywhere. And whereas African Americans of every age, gender, and culture has a story to tell and gifts to share with the world. And whereas additional attention is given to African Americans during Black History Month, it is important to understand every month that countless African Americans have been undervalued and inadequately recognized for their contributions to our community, our nation, and our world. And whereas African Americans and their allies will continue to work to ensure they are never silenced and their stories of achievement can be told. And whereas every person is called to be advocates and allies for African Americans. Now therefore, Nita Alom, Chair, on behalf of the Durham Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim February 2025 is Black History Month in Durham County, North Carolina, and call upon all citizens to observe and celebrate. and call upon all citizens to observe and celebrate the successes of African Americans and to mark this month with appropriate observances honoring endless possibilities of African Americans everywhere this 10th day of February 2025. Signed by the Chair, Nita Alom; Vice Chair, Dr. Mike Lee; Michelle Burton, Commissioner; Wendy Jacobs, Commissioner; Stephen Valentine, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. And now we have Dr. Brent Lewis and Attorney Nisha Williams.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good evening. I would like to say thank you for this proclamation for Black History Month on behalf of the Office of Equitable Wellbeing, and you get to hear from me every month. So, I'm going to pass it over to Attorney Nisha Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Black history in America, in particularly in Durham County, it is vital to our understanding of this country and this county's complex past. It's crucial in highlighting the significant contributions to, not to, but of black people. Despite facing systematic oppression, it also serves as a reminder of the ongoing struggle for racial equality and equity. Thus, it informs us in the present and helps us to shape a more just and future for all citizens. I, Nisha Williams, as Chair of the Durham Racial Equity Commission, it is a joint commission between the county and city. Thank you, Commissioners and County Staff, for this Black History Month proclamation. Over the past three years, I have worked alongside a diverse group of Durham citizens to learn about the wonderful strides this county continues to make in support of uplifting all Durham citizens, including, but most importantly, its black citizens. Durham's rich history of black leaders and legacy continues into today. We support you and commend you for the work that you have done and will continue to do for the citizens of Durham, North Carolina. Thank you.
Thank you, as always, Dr. Lewis, for bringing resolutions to us and making sure that we recognize the deep history of Durham and the many ways that we are so culturally beautiful across Durham. And thank you, Attorney Williams, for serving as the Chair of the Racial Equity Committee and for all the work that you do in that committee and outside of it. It's so important for us to recognize Black History Month and remember all of the sacrifices and the work that black Americans have put in to provide us these freedoms, especially for me as a brown immigrant woman. I know my freedoms and liberties would not exist without the contributions of black Americans. So, thank you so much for making sure we have this resolution to honor. The Commissioners? Commissioner Jacobs?
Well, I just want to thank you, Brent, to you and your staff for lifting up these really important parts of our culture and history every month, and also Attorney Williams for your role on the Racial Equity Commission and also being here tonight. I think now more than ever, we have to keep lifting up and celebrating the importance of our black history, not just locally, but in this country. And so, I want to take the opportunity to highlight what was in the Durham County Newsletter this week about, called "The Other Side of the Story," which the Durham County Library is hosting. It's a community forum of the Stagville Descendants Council Library Series. And it is an opportunity to celebrate Durham's history and learn about the legacies of those who contributed to it. And we know that not only as we honor the Native Americans whose land was here, we also want to honor and recognize the enslaved people of our community that built the economy of Durham and all the descendants of the Stagville Plantation, which was the largest place where there were enslaved people in the state of North Carolina, right here in Durham County. So, there are different sessions. There's one, they all start at 10 a.m. on February 8th at South Regional Library, February 15th at North Regional, February 22nd at Main Library, March 8th at Stanford at Warren, March 15th at East Regional, and then at 10:30 a.m. at the Lion Park Community Center on March 19th, and on 10 a.m. on March 22nd at the Bragtown Baptist Church Trail, Durham Rail Trail Discussion. And this is being sponsored by the Stagville Descendants Council. So, that is incredible, all of those sessions that are being hosted for the community, asking people to come and share about their family's history at those sessions. So, we really want and share stories. So, we encourage people in our community to come out at one of those sessions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, so thank you for the work that you do on behalf of all of the communities in Durham, and particularly as we celebrate Black History Month. I'd just like to remind all of our citizens and that although we set aside a month, every day is Black History Month, or every month is Black History Month in our community. But it's a reminder of the multicultural, multiracial blessed community that we all aspire towards. And so, this is just a continued reminder that we have to work together to make this to be the best community that we can be. So, Happy Black History Month.
Vice Chair Lee?
I'll also say thank you for this, and kind of tangential to what Commissioner Valentine said. There are those around the nation who want to not celebrate Black History Month. And this proclamation means to me is we don't need anyone's permission to celebrate Black History Month. This is, this is nice and well, and we do this each year. But I want to remind people, you can't stop us from celebrating our own history in any given place. You may, on the federal level, take it away and then give it back and say that you got it back and, you know, you're trying to be the hero, but you, we don't need your permission. And this proclamation reaffirms that, that here in Durham, we're going to celebrate it. It's very important. I was, me and my wife were walking down by the institute and looking at the pictures. They were going to the, it was warm enough to go to the parlor after, after lunch. And we were talking about the history of the institute there and Mechanics' and Farmers' Bank and everything. So, thank you so much. It was always great to see the proclamations come through. We appreciate your work. And just a reminder to everyone, we don't need permission. We're going to do it, and we're going to celebrate it every day like the Commissioner Valentine said.
Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, I just want to ditto what everyone said. Thank you so much for uplifting Black History Month. We're very grateful to be here in Durham because when I first came to North Carolina as a teenager, and I lived with my grandparents in Fayetteville, and the one place they were so enamored by in the state was Durham, North Carolina. And the reason was because of that tall North Carolina Mutual Building. And they would talk about the North Carolina Mutual Insurance Company with great pride because it was built by African Americans. So, us celebrating that history, understanding how powerful it is, and just uplifting it. And I just want to echo what my colleague, Vice Chair Lee, said. You know, we don't need anyone's permission to celebrate black history. And it's American history. So, thank you so much, Dr. Lewis, for the proclamation and everything that you do to uplift all the communities.
Thank you.
I want to also just uplift one, Commissioner Jacobs reminded me, a community-led initiative, actually. There's Durham Community Member Brian Kennedy, who's actually been curating and pulling together stories of black farmers in the South. And so, he's actually conducting this project right now. If there are individuals who are farmers, and this can be just a farm, a garden in your own backyard. He wants to cultivate those stories and collect them and put them into a book to just share the rich history of black Americans through farming and gardening. And so, you can go to his website. It is projectmaroon.com. And I'll send it over to you, Clerk Wallace, to include in the announcements. Thank you.
Clerk Wallace, please share that with me as well. My office loves to collect storytelling that's happening in the community.
The next resolution is a resolution honoring the lives and legacy of Dia Shadi Barakat, Yusuf Muhammad Abu Salha, and Razan Muhammad Abu Salha for today is marking the 10th anniversary of their murders in a hate crime shooting in Chapel Hill within Durham County. I'll read this one. The Durham Board of County Commissioners Resolution, Honoring the Lives and Legacy of Dia Shadi Barakat, Yusuf Muhammad Abu Salha, and Razan Muhammad Abu Salha on the 10th anniversary of their passing. Whereas on February 10th, 2015, the Durham County community suffered an unspeakable tragedy when three bright, compassionate, and dedicated young Muslim Americans, Dia Shadi Barakat, Yusuf Muhammad Abu Salha, and Razan Muhammad Abu Salha, were senselessly murdered in Durham County. And whereas Dia, Yusuf, and Razan lived lives filled with love, generosity, and a deep commitment to serving others, demonstrating the best of what it means to be engaged and compassionate members of the Durham community. And whereas Dia Barakat, a devoted husband, brother, son, and friend, was a dental student at the, at University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, who dedicated his life to providing free dental care to those in need, both locally and internationally, including through humanitarian work with Syrian refugees. And whereas Yusuf Muhammad Abu Salha, a loving wife, daughter, sister, and role model, was preparing to follow in Dia's footsteps by pursuing dental studies at UNC Chapel Hill, while passionately engaging in community service and interfaith outreach. And whereas Razan Muhammad Abu Salha, a beloved daughter, sister, and friend, was a talented architect and design student at North Carolina State University, whose artistic vision and generous spirit were reflected in her commitment to philanthropy and mentorship. And whereas their lives were guided by their faith, their love for family and friends, and their unwavering belief in justice, equality, and the power of community service. And whereas Dia, Yusuf, and Razan were proud Muslim Americans who embraced their faith as a source of strength and inspiration, advocating for inclusivity, service, and justice while demonstrating the rich contribution of Muslims, Muslim Americans to society. And whereas their tragic deaths underscored the importance of standing against all forms of hate, intolerance, and violence while reaffirming our community's commitment to love, acceptance, and unity. And whereas their legacy continues to inspire countless individuals through initiatives such as the Dia, Yusuf, and Razan Memorial Fund, as well as organizations like the R3 Winners Foundation and the Lighthouse Project, which carry forward their dedication to service, education, and community support. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Durham County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor and celebrate the lives of Dia Shadi Barakat, Yusuf Muhammad Abu Salha, and Razan Muhammad Abu Salha on the 10th anniversary of their passing, recognizing their lasting impact on our community and beyond, and reaffirming our commitment to fostering a more just, inclusive, and compassionate society in their memory. This, the 10th day of February 2025. Signed by all the Commissioners. I made it through. Thank you all so much to my colleagues for supporting and introducing this resolution with me. The families are honoring Dia, Yusuf, and Razan tonight, so they weren't able to be here today, but they have. Thank you, Clerk Wallace. She framed it, and I was able to deliver it to them so that they will be reading it at the ceremony that they're having tonight, where they're honoring, they recognize individuals from the community who have been carrying on their, Dia, Yusuf, and Razan's legacy over the past year. And just want to remind everyone, you know, they were taken from us in a hate crime, but we respond to that hate with only love and acts of service because we know love is stronger. And that's what Dia, Yusuf, and Razan would want from us. Thank you. Commissioner Valentine?
Chair Alom, thank you for bringing this to our attention once again. And so, I think we need to be reminded in our community from time to time that everyone is a member of-
Stephen.
Everyone is a member, I'm sorry. Everyone is a member in our community, no matter where they come from, no matter what language they speak, no matter the color of their skin. And so, when you talked about love, acceptance, and unity, I'm reminded that this family is still in pain. And so, my heart goes out to the families who lost brothers and a sister in this, in this tragic incident, a hate crime. And I wanted to also say to the larger Muslim American community that we love and embrace you, and that love will always trump hate.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine. Ms. Shirley?
Commissioner Alom and Chair, thank you so much for bringing this. I remember hearing you speaking about this as a reason, one of the reasons why you decided to come into leadership in Durham County, and one of your motivations. And, you know, no proclamation or anything that we could say will replace your friends, but I think their legacy lives through the work that you continue to do. You are Chair of the County Commission here in Durham, partly because you are, you are fueled by them. And they continue to move you forward. You ran for Congress on them. You continue to grow. You continue to lead. And I hope that for the family and for friends and those who are celebrating their lives tonight, remembering their lives tonight, I hope that, I hope we can continue to remember and cherish what they brought. I wish I had known them. It feels like I wish I had known them because of what I've heard over the years, but also today in this proclamation. But if there's any comfort from tragedy, a lot of times triumph comes. And it feels like their lives have already changed the area, changed Durham, based on what, what you've done yourself. So, my heart goes out to the family, yourself as well. And I hope you continue to see that their impact is being felt and continues to be felt through, through you here in Durham. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Vice Chair, Dr. Lee. Commissioner Jacobs?
Well, I want to say thank you to my colleagues for your beautiful comments. I want to lift those up as well. It's hard to believe it's been 10 years. And I just want to acknowledge the families, but also the entire Muslim community in our region, who are incredible and amazing, along with Commissioner Alom and her family. But just to see the inspiration and the love that has come out of this legacy. Some of us had the opportunity to go and see what the work of the Lighthouse Project and our Three Winners Foundation is doing in our community. And I encourage anyone who wants to find out how they can support the legacy and vision of these three people who, young people who were taken away from our community. This is, this is a great way to contribute. And also, if you want to learn more, there was a documentary created about two years ago. Was it 36 Seconds? Which you can just Google it, and there's, it's either free or a very small fee to watch it. It's very powerful and really important because even though justice was done, what's really important to know is that it's, this is still not called a hate crime in our country. And so, we still have a lot of work to do. And now, again, more than ever- So thank you.
And there will actually be viewings of the documentary throughout this week. There are several events honoring and recognizing Dia, Yusuf, and Razan. So February 12th, at Witherspoon Auditorium at NC State, they're hosting 36 Seconds Portrait of a Hate Crime. And then one at UNC, Tuesday, February 11th, at UNC's Great Hall. And at all of these events, Suzanne and Faris, Dia's siblings, and Yusuf Abu Salha, Razan, and Yusuf's brother will be speaking as well. Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what our colleagues have already said. You know, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I can't believe it's been 10 years myself. I remember quite well when it occurred. One of the... I was teaching in Raleigh at the time, and one of my coworkers played basketball with Dia. Yeah, because he went to NC State. And he was really devastated by it, right? And, you know, my uncle in Chicago, you know, called me about it, because it was such a brutal... I know it's not called a hate crime, but it is a hate crime. It was such a brutal hate crime. But this was a beautiful way to honor your friend's memory, and I'm glad you brought it to us. And, you know, in the Lighthouse Project, how that started in their memory. So we have to keep speaking out against hate, against people, just because they don't look like us or speak the same language, and that we have to realize we're all in this together, we're all in the same community, human community. So thank you for doing this. And, you know, I hope their families are having some comfort in knowing that they are loved and thought of.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. And one last thing, there's also every year we do an interfaith food drive, where we collect donations of food and also online donations, and everything goes to the Food Bank of North Carolina. And the final collection day is actually February 23rd. I'd invite all of y'all to come out. It's a really big event. We get all of the cans, and we sort through them, pack them into boxes, and go and deliver them to the North Carolina Food Bank. And for several years, this food drive has actually been the largest food drive of the North Carolina Food Bank has received. So February 23rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., it'll be at the Lighthouse Project on Kildare Farm Road. I'll send that over to everyone here, and also to Clerk Wallace. Thank you. That now brings us to our next ceremony. Do you have another? Nope. Consent agenda to Manager Hager.
I'm sorry, can we approve the minutes?
Oh, yes. We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Now to Manager Hager.
Great. Commissioners, the items on the consent agenda were discussed in the meeting last week. There was one item that was added, which is the last one, a contract related to our tax department. And Kiara will talk about all of our activities with the revaluation process in a few minutes. And so with this contract, we'll facilitate the workforce needs as we move forward with the reappraisal process. And we're trying to make sure that we have enough individuals available with our call center. We will also use staff within the organization for the call center. So you may even get me if you call now after hours. But anyway, we will do what we can to make sure we're responsive. And this one was not discussed, but wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, Manager Hager. Are there any comments or items that individuals would like to pull?
I just wanted to say, County Manager, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Valentine, second by Commissioner Jacobs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. That now brings us to our only presentation for the night, the 2025 General Reappraisal Update with Kiara, our Tax Administrator.
Good evening, Commissioners. And I want to thank you all before I even get started. Kiara Doyle, Durham County Tax Administrator. I do want to thank you all for the time and space to share this information again. I know I've done a presentation a few times, but I think it's very important to get this information out. So forgive me for the repetition, but I want to make sure I present you all the information, as well as the property owners of Durham County. I think it's very important, considering the expectations of this particular reappraisal. So I'll jump right in. Please ask as many questions as needed. Discussion topics will be what is an appraisal? What is a appraisal? Market sale trends, Durham County's real estate market, reappraisals, and property taxes, tax relief and assistance, and the appeals process. North Carolina General Statute 105-286 requires that all counties conduct a reappraisal at least once every eight years. Most recent appraisals here in Durham were 2008, 2016, and 2019. Reappraisal process. A reappraisal is the process of appraising thousands of properties as of a single date in a way that is fair and equitable to all property owners. North Carolina General Statute, again, 105-286, requires that this process is done at least once every eight years. The more time between reappraisals, the more opportunity for activity to take place in the market, positive or negative. North Carolina General Statute 105-287 prohibits the changing of tax values in a non-revaluation year. Speaking to that previous point, I recently saw a report where a county that waited eight years, they're looking at a possible increase of about 88%. So it just goes to show that waiting is not necessarily the best approach. That is a county that I'm pretty sure we'll hear about real soon. I don't want to speak on the county's name at the moment. But it's nothing egregious, I don't think. I think it's just a matter of timing, and that time is very important. So the longer you wait, the possibility for that market activity to affect things. The goal of the process is to bring all property values to 100% market value. The process equalizes the tax base, but is not considered or intended to be a revenue generator. Durham County is focused on moving to a four-year reappraisal cycle. Now, the benefits of a four-year cycle. Directly benefits horizontal and vertical equity in regards to the values. Our measurements of PRD, COD, and COV, that is Price Related Differential, Coefficient of Dispersion, and the Coefficient of Variance. These are metrics that are used to kind of make sure that the work we're doing is fair and equitable, all right? This is very important that we measure our work. So this is a very important measurement that is improved with the frequency of these reappraisals. Also, more frequent, timely representation of the local real estate market, that's residential and commercial. Some of the things we've seen in this particular market were definitely affected by six years versus four years, or what people would love a two-year cycle. It's just a matter of frequency. I think four years is good. It captures things more frequent than eight and six. So I think it'll be a great benefit if we could definitely try to make sure that we hold to that goal of a four-year cycle. Property owners also become more familiar with the process through frequent experiences and repetition. They're not going through long waits and forgetting the process. So repetition helps taxpayers and the property owners as well. Public utility adjustment due to that sales ratio. Sales ratio, that particular sales ratio affects public utility because we're triggered into a mandated reappraisal in that fourth or seventh year. So just having that repetition of a four-year cycle kind of cuts out that whole situation from ever coming about. 2024 sales assessment ratios of the 10 largest counties and our border counties. Again, this just illustrates and shows the importance of reappraisals in general, regardless of the time span. As you see here, counties that are further away from their reappraisal, their ratio is lower. That first column is the final ratio, and the last column is the actual most recent year of their reappraisal. So as you can see, the counties that are further away from their reappraisal are in the 60s and 50s. Excuse me. Reminder of the reappraisal dates that are ahead. November 12th, of course, was the date that the scheduled values were adopted. March 1st is the date we intend to have all of the mail going out to the property owners. March 3rd, the appeal module will be open for 2025 appeals. March 11th through the 25th, we will be holding informational meetings. Those are for property owners to actually have one-on-one opportunities to sit down with appraisers from the office and actually discuss concerns or things that they might need a little more information on in regards to the values they've received. These are not appeal meetings, but they are an opportunity for a property owner to sit down and kind of discuss any concerns they might have with the property that we're unaware of that is usually triggered from the mail, all right? May 5th, Board of Equalization and Review convenes. And June 16th, that board will adjourn. Local real estate market. Home sale prices have increased drastically since our last reappraisal in 2019. During, at January 2019, going into that reappraisal, the median sale price in Durham County was $240,000. As of December of '24, that median sale price is roughly $416,000 and $415,000 for the city. Here's some of the properties that illustrate the types of increases we're seeing in the office while doing our reviews of the sales. 2018 property sold for $325,000. That same property sold in 2024 for $560,000. That is a 72% increase. We have another property that sold in 2018 for $210,000. That same property sold in 2024 for $441,000. 110% increase. 2018, this property sold for $300,000. 2024, this property sold for $710,000. That is a 136% increase. From the commercial side of things. Office property types, vacancy rates are high. Values have declined since 2021, but the average sale price and price per square foot is roughly $15 higher than it was in 2019. So sales and cost data show an increase in these commercial property types. They're countered by the vacancy rates, all right? Just to speak to that a little more, the three approaches to value, sales comparison approach, cost approach, and income approach. Normally, cost approach, sales comparison approach are usually higher than the income approach. That has nothing to do with this particular market. That's general reappraisal. That's general appraisal work. This particular market has an increase in vacancy rates, so it's impacting those sale prices and cost values differently. Retail, average sale price, price per square foot, roughly up $50 than previously in 2019. Multifamily, vacancy rates are a record high. Rental rates are declining. Average sale price per unit up roughly $40,000. Industrial property types, average sale price, price per square foot, $50 higher than 2019. Hospitality, triangle market has been the best in the state. Average sale price per room is roughly $7,000 higher than it was in 2019. Here we have an illustration of some of that data that we just discussed. Everything you're looking at would be cost that is developed from cost and sales reviewing. No income involved in these numbers. All right, so this is just an illustration of the apartment and hotel base rates. And as you can see, the blue is 2019, represents 2019. Orange represents where we are now in 2025. So these are based off of the reviews and analysis the staff has done over the past couple of years to kind of get a feel for where commercial values are based off of sales and the cost approach.
Can you just define base rate?
So the base rates would be the same if we were talking about a home, and we talk about price per square foot. That's what we're looking at. Same type of relationship. These are the rates for these particular commercial property types. So we have a motel, if it was made of wood, masonry, or steel, so on and so forth, for this particular property type. I have about three more slides of other commercial property types, but it'll be the same breakdown in regards to those base rates. Here we have office, lab, research, and development base rates. As you can see as well, those price per square foots have increased over the past six years. Retail base rates. And industrial. All right, here we have the previous reappraisal impacts. First column is the year of the reappraisal. Then we have the actual population estimate, and how the population impacted those particular market sale prices. And we have the tax rate. In this particular illustration, I went ahead and combined city and county. And we have the actual tax bill that is produced from the value and the rate. So as you can see, over the last three reappraisals, the type of increases that were caused. Tax relief programs and assistance, North Carolina General Statute programs. We have three state programs that are administered through the county, amongst others. Exemptions, exclusions, and deferments. Differments, expected to be paid back upon disqualifying events, anything that would take a taxpayer or property owner out of a program. For deferments, there is a rollback. So there is an actual expectation to pay a balance due. Exemptions and exclusions do not have that particular facet attached to them. Low-income homeowner relief program offered by Social Services. Board of County Commissioners created that program in 2019. These are the three state programs that we administer through the office. Elderly Disabled Homestead, 65 years of age or older. Total owner's income must not exceed... Total owner's income must not exceed thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. And that same requirement, income requirement goes for the circuit breaker as well. That three, that thirty-six thousand seven hundred dollars is combined if there are two um, income earners in the home. It excludes twenty-five thousand or fifty percent of the assessed value of the permanent residence. Uh, the disabled ver- veteran exclusion. Disabled veteran form completed by the Department of Veteran Affairs, and this is a hundred percent disability. Um, the disabled veteran needs to qualify for a hundred percent disability. Also available to the surviving spouse. Excludes up to the first forty-five thousand of appraised value of the permanent residence. The circuit breaker program for elderly and disabled deferment program, as I mentioned before, this is the deferment program. Sixty-five years of age or older requires new application every year. The other two programs do not. This limits the amount of annual property taxes on permanent residents. Tax bill is limited to a fixed percentage of income and taxes owed above that limit are deferred. Income limit up to a hundred and fifty percent of the elderly-disabled income limit. Department of Social Services Low-Income Homeowner Relief Program. This is a tax assistance program based upon three-tiered income model centered around the average median income. Eighty percent, sixty percent, or thirty percent. So they have three particular um, ranges that they can qualify for. A lot easier to qualify for this program based on those tiers. Focused on households with income less than or equal to eighty percent of the HUD area median income and tax bill, the current tax bill only meaning they can't, it can't be applied to a previous year. This particular program, homeowners who have owned and used a property as a primary residence for at least the preceding previous five years. So, new homeowners don't qualify for this particular program unless new is six years. To complete the application process, applicants only need proof of income, form of ID, and a copy of their tax bill. Very important, appeals. What if a property owner disagrees with the assessed value? All right, there are three steps to the appeal process. We ask that property owners review the information on file for their property and report any outdated or incorrect information to the tax office. Once they have done so, we would like them to compare their property with comparables. Compare your property value with the sale prices of similar properties using our free online service called, called Comper or other real estate websites available to you. That could be Redfin, Realtor.com, anything that they could get their hands on to kind of give them some information about the market. We prefer they use Comper. And finally, appeal, step three. If all information is up to date and they still disagree with the assessed value, you can file an appeal with the Board of Equalization and Review and schedule a hearing. After the Board of Equalization and Review hears that appeal, it will receive written notification about the property value in the mail. Appeals, further. There are often issues that concern property owners such as the amount of change in value since the last reappraisal. Affordability of the expected taxes, the actual tax bill, and the level of services provided. These are all the types of things that taxpayers, property owners um, would like to make a part of their reason for appealing. While these are all understandable concerns, the only issue the tax office can address during an appeal is the actual appraised value. Reappraisal values are based on the current real estate market and are independent of a previous reappraisal cycle. Another set of dates and reminders. February twenty-first, the budget retreat begins, and that is for this fiscal year of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six projected, projected values. By March first, again, the mail of reappraisal notices, these twenty twenty-five reappraisal notices. March third, again, the appeal module opens up for those twenty twenty-five appeals. And again, we start hosting informational meetings, March eleventh through March twenty-fifth. Those meetings will be at the local county libraries and we will also offer two sessions. I think it's four sessions actually, at the Administration Two Building. So those will be during the actual work week and two will be offered on Saturdays for people who can't make it during the actual work week. May fifth, again, the Board of Equalization and Review will, will convene, and June sixteenth, that board will adjourn. Discussion, please. Questions?
Thank you so much, Akia, for this presentation and all of the work you've been doing behind the scenes. Thank you so much to your team, um, especially the folks who are out in the field actually doing these property uh, assessments and valuations. It's a lot of work and we also, a preemptive thank you for your work of, hopefully you don't get a lot of appeals, but I know that your office will have to deal with that. So preemptive thank you for handling that. Um, I had one or two questions I would like. One was um, more so like a positing of like how we can be more transparent. I saw this uh, article that was talking about like in Australia, when they send people their tax bills, what they do in there is they include like thirty percent of your taxes is funding education. Forty percent of your uh, taxes is funding general government and like that level of transparency of saying like, this is, you're paying this, but like this is what it's going to. Could we do something like that?
I would think we could, but it would take some work between departments. Uh, we would have to work with budget and figure out the best way to illustrate that, but I, I think it's doable.
And if not like in this mail uh, period, because like March first is soon, maybe like in the online dashboard when people look up their property taxes, it can just be on there and then next year we can include it in the mail statements.
I think that's a great idea.
Commissioner Allen, that's a great idea. That is definitely something that we can put together. And I, I do know that over the years, we've had different types of um, informational um, components within the bill. So, yes, we can definitely do that.
And then for our own DSS program that we have, there's a cap on how much um, you can receive receipt, uh, relief for, I think it's like twenty-seven fifty or twenty-five hundred in your bill?
For the
The DSS, the county.
LIHR program. I don't, well.
It's like up to a certain amount.
I was gonna say, I don't know the actual dollar amount on the cap question, only because I believe that thirty percent, they qualify, they can qualify for the entire bill being paid. Now, if that is within that twenty-seven fifty, that might be true. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I would have to ask DSS what that particular number is.
Maybe after we get these valuations, something for us to discuss of like with property taxes, you know, they are going to be increasing, we know, the value of the properties at least. Um, if we want to increase or look at what that cap is for the eighty percent AMI, just to keep it equitable to what the ratio of the bill is now versus what it'll be after the valuations are done.
We, we can definitely explore that. I, I will say, over the years, we've modified our program. Um, it's, it's definitely been a living document as far as what the parameters are and the level uh, that we will support uh, because it's, it was new. And so, much gratitude to the Department of Social Services staff and their board for the constant careful look, and we will definitely come back um, to the board um, to share highlights on what patterns we're seeing. And I will say, it's been the city council um, approach as well to also um, continue to look at that number to make sure we're reaching as many people as we can.
Thank you. And then my last question for the county property, the median county property value. How is that taken into consideration like within the county? Like there might be a house that is three thousand square feet, but it's on like fifteen acres of land versus a house that's three thousand square feet on a quarter acre of land?
So our appraisers are valuing these properties and we do consider both. Um, we don't value just the improvement. We value, we value the land and the improvement together, but we do have it broken out so that taxpayers can see what portion of their value is coming from the improvement and what portion is coming from the land. But in general, what you're describing is the process of evaluating the sales themselves. So we are seeing these sales and we do have to allocate for land. Um, we have raw land sales that kind of give us a more specific idea in regards to what land values may be. But all neighborhoods don't have raw land sales. Some are only improved sales. And so we do have to use some appraisal practices to actually allocate or abstract the land value.
Thank you. So Commissioner Valentine's hand was up?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Doyle. Uh, good evening. And thank you for uh, your hard work. Um, so the reappraisal issue is one that I'm hearing from a lot of residents in our community. And they're a little anxious, uh, rightfully so, uh, particularly uh, when they, when they get those bills. And so, the work that you have been doing with respect to outreach uh, can't be measured. And so I want to thank you and your staff, and I also had a kind of brief conversation with the county manager about the possibilities of the personnel from finance, in- including uh, s- some of your team or some of your engagement efforts. And so, um, moving forward, maybe you can do that. So Chairman uh, Alon, or Chairperson Alon spoke about, spoke about how much. I'm interested with respect to the DSS uh, Low-Income Home, Homeowners Program. Like how many of our residents actually avail themselves to this uh, particular relief?
I don't have a specifics in regards to what DSS has received this year. Um, they have increased dramatically, I was told um, from my last meeting with DSS. The total amount that's available has never been exceeded. Um, our goal or my hope is that this year, we get a lot closer to that pot. Um, but it has definitely, they have already reached, they have surpassed where they were at this point last year. Last year was the biggest um, effort in regards to that program. Um, I think it is very important that that program continues, especially for the next two years at the least, just because we'll see um, we'll see the results and the uh, efforts. Unfortunately, our values go out soon, like within the next two weeks. Hmm, traditionally, property owners don't appeal until they see their tax bill. Um, I can't, I think that's human nature. I understand. Unfortunately, the timeframe to appeal your value is tied to these valuation notices, not tax bills. So it usually puts taxpayers in a, in a hard situation because they don't appeal based off of value. They, they appeal when they see how much they need to pay. Um, so, that program accepting applications, a- a- at least currently, they accept applications far into um, the next year. So they're still accepting applications well into twenty-six. I think that's a big benefit to them. I don't know how much of it is a benefit to us because we're still looking at numbers and things are being done um, past January one. But, as it stands, that particular overlap does benefit the taxpayers who are late to appeal. So I think there are some def- there are some pros and cons to that particular overlap, but I think that is one that I think is very, very beneficial to the taxpayer.
Uh, well, let me just say that I think that uh, as moving forward, and so putting that information out as much as you can uh, would probably be helpful to our residents. And uh, moving forward, if we could, you know, get an idea what those numbers look like, I think that'd be very helpful.
And that program is run through DSS, not through Tax Administration, so we can ask Maggie to provide it because legally, DSS has to run it um, and not Tax Administration. Commissioner Burton?
Just briefly, right, quick, um, just because you asked. In twenty twenty-one, it was a total of a hundred and thirty-nine recipients. Twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year was a total of three hundred and forty recipients. Twenty-three, twenty-four, it was a total of four hundred and ninety-three recipients. That year, the total dispersed was six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, a little more than six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that was four hundred and nine recipients, twenty-three, twenty-four. At the, at the time of my last discussion with Department of Social Services, I don't have a recipient count, but they were already over five hundred thousand with a lot of months to spare. So um, I believe that discussion took place in early December. So, total disbursement was six hundred and ninety thousand for the entire fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and they're already at five, over five hundred thousand um, in December.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burton, then Commissioner Jacobs?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team really about getting the message out about reappraisal. Um, that, doing the outreach and just really being considerate with presenting this information during a regular session because it's a lot of people in Durham County who own property and it's not on their radar and, you know, just working hard to try to get that information out because we know when people see that number the first week of March, it's going to be kind of, you know, gonna gobsmack them, right? So I just want to uplift that and um, yeah, and also I want to, I, I asked you this question before about like with commercial properties. It's more tied with if they're getting the income versus like with the residential property, how it's worth what it sells for because I know with budget, you know, we're about to go into budget season and many people, when they see all these, you know, commercial properties and they're thinking, well, we have all these commercial buildings, we should be getting all this revenue. So, if you could just explain that a little bit more to me, that would, that would be helpful.
Okay, um, so I guess the quickest way to explain it would be commercial properties have the benefit of the income approach accompanying their valuing process. Residential properties do only if they are rental properties. So that if you're not renting your property, it, you can't, you don't have a reason to apply the income approach. So, to go further with that, you also have to consider during the appeal process, a property owner, commercial property owner can have a a value that is incorporating all three approaches. So they're getting a value that is based off of our market information. And that market information gives us some benchmarks to go for with the income approach. All right? Once that particular property owner appeals, normally, they provide their individual market information. So it's not coming from the market, it's coming directly from their building, what they are renting their space for. We don't have that information until they appeal. So a lot of times, our market information, in this case, we pay the contractor to provide us with market information across the county. Because that's not information that we can attain on our own. And if we don't have the luxury of sitting down with these business owners when we visit, we have to depend on market information. In that way, most of the times, well, I won't say most of the times, sometimes they present their information that may be lower than the market information that we previously set their value. It would be the same if a It would be the same if a property owner takes the time to appeal, they sit down going over that appeal, they're able to bring things to the table that we don't have prior to them appealing. Things like the condition of the property on the inside. Our appraisers appraise properties externally. So, we wouldn't know the condition of the floors or the condition of some space that is inhabitable or uninhabitable. There are things that we don't know until you appeal, and that's why it's very important to appeal. I say all the time, I don't want 126,000 appeals. That's how many parcels we have that would overrun the office in regards to the bandwidth, that many appeals. But, in all honesty, appeals are good because they help us correct data. Some of that data we cannot attain unless they are forthcoming, either in an appeal or if they just bring it to us, because you don't have to appeal to let us know some condition situations that are within a property. But, those are the same things that happen, whether it is a residential property or a commercial property. You have a right to appeal, and when you do so, there's usually an opportunity to get more data.
And I appreciate you explaining it again because, again, when we have these discussions with our residents and they ask us these questions and want to be able to explain to them why it is what it is, so I appreciate you for doing this. Thank you.
No problem, no problem. Thank you for asking the question.
Thank you, Kiara. We're getting close.
Oh, we're here.
So, you're probably going to kill me for saying this, but you kind of opened up the door. Since we really do need to get on a back to a four-year schedule, which was the plan, we got derailed by COVID and things like that. Do we need to start planning for 2029 as soon as we finish 2025?
I will. I don't, I don't know. Yeah, I'm, I'm planning for it already. Some of the, some of the analysis and data that the state provides us, Department of Revenue, they do a great job of sharing information statewide. So, if you're paying attention, you can see certain trends, you can see certain pitfalls. And I think a lot of it is just a matter of bandwidth. Certain counties are smaller, they don't have the resources. Some counties are bigger, they have a ton of resources. A lot of these, there are a lot of reasons for eight-year reappraisals. Sometimes, i- it's a necessity because of the ability to actually have the resources to do a reappraisal. Reappraisals are costly, and they are, it's very important to be as accurate as you possibly can because these affect the taxpayers' pockets. So, I believe that frequency is very important. What you all come up with and decide to be a good time period, we'll do our best to make sure we carry that out. Four years, I believe, is, is sufficient. I do think eight years, I've been here since 2007, I've only been a part of an eight-year period of wait. I think that was, it was, it was very impactful because of that time period. I think four years is sufficient.
And I just want to, just for the benefit of history, because I have been through the 2016 and 2019 appraisals, we, this board did dedicate ourselves to that, to the point that we actually did, the 2016, we did the 2019 only three years afterwards because we wanted to get on a regular schedule. So, that's why we did 2019, and the plan was, honestly, to make sure that we weren't doing reappraisals on election years. That's why we did not have, you know, so the idea was, we would have this, we were supposed to have this in 2023. So, we're two years behind on that. So, I would just say, Madam Manager, I think it's important that whether it's part of our upcoming budget retreat, just having that in mind, that whatever resources our tax department needs, obviously, to complete this process, but also to keep us back on schedule for that, which would be 2029. So, I don't know if you've all discussed this already.
No, we have. With this market, the frequency of doing your reassessments is important. And, and Kiara gave the example earlier of the valuation variance, and we want to compress it. So, the higher frequency of the assessments are important. The challenges, the last time, were coupled with two issues. One, the COVID effect, and we were also upgrading the technology for the system. And so, those, those two delays just made it a little bit longer. So, we feel as though we'll be in a good place to get on a recurring cycle, especially with having a technology upgrade and those kinks work through. And so, we're planning. So, I'm sure as soon as Kiara finishes this one, he's probably, well, he's probably already starting.
And, and I don't want to, I just want to thank you all for, and Dwayne, Mr. Brinson, ACM Brinson, and Claudia Hager, and you all for approving that conversion that took place. ACM Brinson was the tax administrator at the time, but the system that we converted to, hopefully, and from what I'm seeing, will certainly allow us to be able to do things in a faster fashion, a quicker fashion, a more efficient fashion. So, that software conversion, I know it was costly, but we definitely have benefited from that upgrade.
Thank you. And also, in terms of the, when the tax bill does go out, I mean, normally, we do have information also about the tax relief programs.
Yes.
They are in Spanish and in English. And, you know, honestly, in past bills, we've had a very general break, breakdown, like a pie chart of what your tax dollars go to. But, so, yeah, that's really key. And I was wondering, it was, it's very interesting to see that the rental, the rent for multifamily rentals is going down. And if you have any specifics about that, that would be really interesting, because we have really, the city council has really increased the supply of multifamily. So, it would be, it would, I'd like to see where we were, you know, where, where we were and where we are at now. I know you sent us something that showed that we were 4% below the national average for multifamily vacancies. So, I think that's important. And just to share the information about the current tax relief program, the deadline for applications for this year is, oh, well, actually, it says August 15, 2024. So, that, what does that mean? This is what's on our website.
Yeah, that was, that was for '23, '24. So, I believe '24, '25, yes.
So, August 15, 2025?
I believe that is correct. I might have seen a date a little sooner, I believe, because I, I, I want to say that that's when they open up applications. So, I believe that it ends, I want to say maybe May.
All right, well, we'll have to ask.
Yeah, I can, I can get that information from.
That's what it says online.
Social Services.
And, again, maybe this, this, at least what's online, talks about a three-tiered program, so that people who are 30%, well, it depends on your, what tax bracket you're in, but if you are at 30% AMI and 60 years of age or above, you could be eligible to have your entire tax bill covered with this grant, so.
And Commissioner Jacobs, I checked that website out. It's, the August 15 date is when they start resuming the application process.
Yeah.
And we.
That's a resuming, okay.
And so, our cutoff date, it used to be much earlier, if I'm not mistaken, and Dwayne or Kiara can correct me. I believe at one point, we were sort of having a cutoff date in the January timeframe, and then we extended it to a later period, as Kiara talked about, May timeframe. So, we've tried to be as generous as possible with the dates. And the intent previously was to come back to the board, both the Board of Commissioners and Council, if we found that the dollars budgeted for it hit a ceiling. So, there could be some kind of policy conversation. And historically, that goal was around the, the December, January timeframe. So, I am sure we'll work closely with the city manager to keep those dates in, in our forefront.
Okay, I just found it, May 30th.
Okay.
2025.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we could add that to the website. And I just also want to share that there are a lot of other groups that are helping.
Yep.
People fill out the applications, like Aging While Durham was having a session on that, and the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit was also helping, getting out of flyer and helping people. So, we really do rely on the nonprofits to help us with that. So, I'm, I'm grateful for their help. Do we have a schedule for those, the information sessions that you mentioned in March?
Yes.
Do we have, okay.
Yes, we have it. It's actually posted on our website, and it'll be included in the Change of Value Noticement.
Okay, so that will be i- in the mailing?
It will be in the mailing, and it'll also have some translations for those that need Spanish-translated copies. We'll have access, they'll have them on the website, but we'll also have directions for them to actually request a hard copy if needed.
Okay, great. And then, Chair Alon, you had shared about a representative in our state legislature who was proposing legislation to revise some of the state programs to make them more reflective of the current costs of living and things like that in, in our state. I don't know if you're familiar with that?
I am. Yes, there is a group of, actually, assessors and tax administrators that are trying, they've been trying for years, actually. I believe ACM Brinson was a part of it at one point. But, there is a collection of people trying to make sure that they put as much information out there for the state to try to see if we can get a different approach. The actual programs, so, just to understand, the programs right now are based on that income that I mentioned, but it's uniform, so it's for the entire state. As you would, as you would expect, if that, at that, with that approach, if the income requirement is raised, you would have some counties that would lose their tax base because everybody qualifies for an exemption in some of these other counties where their average median income may be a lot lower. So, if that's raised statewide, it affects some counties in a way that would just be financially crippling. So, the current approach is what they're trying to speak to. They would like to see if it would be possible to do something that's more specific to each county based on the median income of that county. I know that a few counties, like Wake County, Mecklenburg County, are in, are kind of spearheading this, this conversation because some of those economies are impacted more based on their average median income. And I believe we would fit into that same conversation based on our average median income. Durham County is considered to be in that, that top echelon in regards to income.
And I don't think we discussed this at our legislative, did we discuss this at the legislative breakfast specifically?
This specific legislation came out or was introduced after that meeting.
Okay.
And I, I think I passed it along to Manager Hager as well, so I'm sure Deborah has it now. Yeah, and it also, it's an NCACC priority as well, so they're also lobbying. And this is something that, you know, has the potential to move because it has been introduced by a Southern Wake County representative who is Republican. So, it has actual legs on it to move through the legislature.
Yeah, just so we can make sure that our lobbyists know that we're, would like to be a part of it and are in support of it. Yeah, thank you.
I think, yeah, we should also make sure we read through all of the language of the bill. Because it, sometimes, you know, things get snuck in there, but so, just read through the whole language.
So, as my colleagues were talking, I was checking off all the questions that I had in through your presentation. So, I'm not going to say much, but just thank you. Your transparency, your, the way that you explain things, you break it down for the community is a very big asset. And I think it's very important to have someone like you and your, and, and not, not someone like you, but have you here in Durham County to explain these things in a calm manner. It's super technical, super difficult to understand, but the way that you presented is really, i- is great. And I really, I just wanted to take a moment just to appreciate you, sir, and how you present this tax information. It's not the most comfortable thing for the community to hear, but the transparency you provide, the information that you can, you consistently provide is, is really assuring. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And in the resources we provide to the tax administrative staff, hopefully, somewhere in there is a break and rest for them as well, before they jump into the next tax revaluation season.
There will be pause. To catch one's breath.
Yes, but I, I would like to also echo the level of detail and attention that Mr. Doyle has, has done in leading the team. He, if you see his schedule and his outreach efforts, I wonder sometimes, does he have a body double? Because he seems to be on the circuit, sharing about what's happening and what's to come. And we, we are just grateful for all that he's doing and his team, and grateful for Dwayne and his leadership as well. It's, this is complex work, and as y'all all acknowledged, but we're grateful for, for all that he's doing and all of the team members that are not here tonight. Thanks to all of them.
Certainly, and I appreciate your, your support, because I could not do it without your support. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Kiara. That, our next item is items pulled from the consent. We don't have any. We do not have anything else on our agenda, so I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
They move by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Burton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all so much.